No microphones.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the Battle Creek City Commission meeting for June 3, 2025. It is 7:02. We're going to have a moment of silence for our invocation, and then we'll have a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Smith. Would you please stand, if you're able to, for a moment of silence? Commissioner Smith?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, so I will take my time for the meeting. And at this time, if you could do the roll call, Deputy Clerk?
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner LaCoss?
Here.
Commissioner Lance?
Here.
Commissioner Morris. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Present.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sophia?
Here.
Mayor Banky?
Here. Thank you very much. We have two proclamations. I'm going to ask that the men of the commission please accept the Men's Health Month Award or proclamation, and then we will have the proclamation for our annual Juneteenth Family Day. I know that Juneteenth is on Thursday, June 19, if I remember correctly. I'm not sure if the celebration will be the next following weekend or two after that. So we'll allow the members of the Juneteenth Organization to tell us more about it. So if we could have a couple of the commissioners come forward and accept the proclamation for Men's Health Month. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Jim Lance, too. Every year, the Men's Health Organization, I think it's out of San Francisco, California, encourages municipalities throughout the state to really focus on men's health issues, be it mental health, diabetes, prostate, colon cancer. And so at this period of time, that's why we're encouraging people to get tested, people to accept responsibility and visit your doctor at least once, maybe twice a year. And because of this, it's very proactive, and it's very much in the best interest of your family. So on behalf of the City Commission, we want to thank those City Commissioners here, and Ted's going to take a picture. Juneteenth Organization, would you please come forward and tell us about Galveston, Texas, and the celebration that started down there that has transformed to Battle Creek? And I go on record saying I think this is the biggest celebration that takes place in Battle Creek now is Juneteenth. And with the new park, with the new park and new parking, it's going to be easier for people to navigate around Clotven's Park and really enjoy the amount of money that City Commission and the foundation has put into the park. It's beautiful. My son was up there tonight playing basketball, and it's just a place to be, and I really appreciate it. And I believe we have 22 security cameras. Is that correct, Ted? To increase the safety of the participants and those people that go to the park. So I'm going to turn over to Linward Gray, who will talk a little bit about the date, and then maybe introduce a couple of the members.
Thank you. Yes, I am Linward Gray. I am the Treasurer for Juneteenth Family Day, our local celebration. We are completely run by volunteers, and I have some of those volunteers with me today. We enjoy bringing this festival to our community and to our town. And yes, that redesigned park allows us to shine with a whole lot of new features for this year, and we invite everyone to come down. If you don't remember anything, remember juneteenthbattlecreek.com. Juneteenthbattlecreek.com. That is where all of our information is for this year's festival, our sponsors, we couldn't do it without them, and all the activities. Some of the highlights are, we have ponies coming back to the park, so there'll be pony rides for the kids. We also have a great Friday night movie that's back again on Friday, the 20th, at Washington Heights. That's Mufasa, The Lion King. And that's open to everybody, and there's free pizza. Can't beat pizza. Free popcorn. And then there's a lot of free giveaways in the park, including Post Consumer Brands, Kellinova provided snack products. So we are going to have a lot of giveaways, including hot dogs, pop, and chips that we give out every, every year. So just be with us. There's also going to be a recognition of our community service awardees, which includes the C Superintendent Dr. Kimberly Carter. It includes Reverend Dr. Lorenzo Small and his wife Alexis. And lastly, we have, I'm blanking all of a sudden, help me out. It'll come back in a minute. But anyway, we have three awardees this year, and we want to bring folks out to celebrate them. And then our essay contest ends tonight for high schoolers, and we have a great first prize of $500. So if your high schooler has not applied for that, we want to make sure you encourage them by 11:59 to apply for that tonight. So everybody listening, tonight's the night. So, and then Bobby Holly is bringing his bike giveaway. We all love the bike giveaway. And this is his last year, so we're going to do it up big. That's sponsored by John and Bridget Banks, and we appreciate them doing that for seven to 12-year-olds. So there's just a lot going on. Please join us in the park and enjoy yourself. Great entertainment, great fellowship, celebrating freedom for everyone. Thank you.
Lynn, thank you very much for your very thorough report, and I look forward to seeing everyone there. I know Kathy will be there. She enjoys the event immensely. So, once again, the 21st of June, be there and enjoy yourself for a Family Day event in the park. Next item on our agenda is chair noting any added or deleted resolutions.
There were none.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is petitions, communications, and reports.
There were none.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment regarding any remaining agenda item. If you'd like to make public comment regarding any remaining agenda item, please raise your hand, and I will acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You'll have four minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and your address before making your comment and indicate which agenda item you are speaking to. If you're looking to make comments on the public hearings that will become up next on the agenda. That's a little confusing, but if you are looking to make comments on the public hearings, you'll have to make them at this period of time. Okay, yes, Lynn?
Linward Gray, 245 Irving Park Drive. And of course, the name came back to me as I was taking my seat. So I just wanted to acknowledge our third community service awardee, and that's Corporal Sean O'Brien. So I wanted to make sure that the world knew, the world knows, that Battle Creek Public Police Department has a gem in Corporal O'Brien, and we're happy to recognize her and her efforts in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Joe?
Joe Harris from Battle Creek. Talking about the ordinance in regard to vehicular nuisances. I'd like to see something added in regard to that, if at all possible, because I read through it, and I may have missed it, but I didn't see anything in regard to minors. And here's why I want to have the board or the commission consider this. Last week, as my wife and I were driving down Territorial Road, we were passed by a minor who was driving a dirt bike, and I kid you not, he had been doing 70. He passed myself, he passed my, and a couple of the cars ahead of us. So I would like, possibly, if something could be put into the ordinance that would make it so that would kind of make parents partially responsible if they're allowing their kids to do this. I've seen it, and I've seen mini bikes going down the road. I've seen go-karts. I've seen dirt bikes. I'm not opposed to those, but you know, there's a place, you know, for them, and the road's not one of those. The reason is, is it might give this legislation a little bit of teeth. If the parents knew that they could potentially get in trouble for their kid going down the road at 50 miles an hour on a dirt bike, maybe they'll think twice about letting their kid do that. Just a thought. In regard to ordinance number 042025, in regard to adding things on the agenda by the city manager, just some questions. These are rhetorical. You can answer them yourself. But does this ordinance affect the commissioner's ability to add items to the agenda? I read this, and I didn't see anything in there where it spoke about the commissioner's ability to add. I did read in there where it talked about the commissioner's ability to take things off. So my concern is, is this going to in any way, shape, or form affect the commissioner's ability to add things to the agenda? I'm basically going by Roberts, which basically says that how that happens is you raise the motion to add the item, you get the second, you discuss briefly. If you need any, you take a vote whether or not to add it on. I didn't see anything in this that spoke to that. My concern is that it could affect it in a negative way if it's not addressed. I don't know. To me, this is a matter of checks and balances. The commissioners are elected by the people and are, in all reality, the people's representatives, and this ordinance takes away from the commissioner's ability to add items to the agenda. And in all reality, it takes power away from the people, and I don't want to see that happen. So that might be something to be clarified. And real quick, Mr. Mayor, clarification. Do we have to talk about public hearing things now? Was that what you said?
Yes, I believe that's, this is the time to talk about.
Yeah, Mayor, yeah, let me clarify if that is confusing. No, when the public hearings are opened by the mayor, then there will be an opportunity then for public comment.
Then I won't do that then, right now. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yes, Percy.
If I heard Ted right, this is a public hearing, correct? All right. My name is Percy Bean. I live at 1-
Percy, we're not there quite yet. We will be ready after this public comment period.
Any other public comment this time? John? Is that a hand up, John? No? Okay. I'm sorry. I can't hear you, John.
Where are we at in the agenda? Are we at the public hearing, or are we at the consent agenda hearing? Which is it? Why?
We're at public comment right now.
Oh, the consent agenda?
Sure. Yes. Bad Dave, John?
No, I'm just trying to follow the things. When you keep jumping around and changing the ability to censor us, and this is just that, it's got me confused for a moment there because you keep changing things. My name is John Kennefick, 234 South Avenue. I'm going to talk about Resolution 133. Before I talked about Resolution 133 and speak on the matter, on November, when the two new commissioners were sworn in, I made a recommendation to both commissioners. Find out how many cost increases the entire commission, while seating, and the people they replaced, passed while they were in office. No response so far. Let me read 133, because you probably don't understand this.
John, just make sure you're making your comments towards me.
Don't interrupt me, sir. Bond and insurance schedule for the city of Battle Creek. Nowhere does it say in this packet of 62 pages, how many cost increases are in that packet that you're approving today. These are 167 cost increases that no one knows about, that are going to impact the citizens down the road. This is the worst packet that I've ever seen. This year, it's 167 you're passing. Last year was 135. The year before was 167. These are things that hit the citizens and draw faster their tax dollars, the money they make, that they're going indirectly that they don't see. I suggest you vote against this. You're not going to. The Calhoun County Government has a tax bond schedule. They may not call it that. The government of Battle, or excuse me, State of Michigan has tax bond schedules. It's a lot thicker, and when they do that, a lot of costs go up that are passed on to all the citizens again. Federal government does the same thing. This is how you come behind our backs and rip us off. If you want to be different, new commissioners, you'll vote against this. If you want to be just like the people that were already here and are already in office, and the people you replaced, well, you'll be part of the problem just like they are. You're just drawing money faster than people can make money, and they wonder where their paychecks are going. It's going to tax bond schedules and all kinds of other scams. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Michelle Gregory, 202 South Avenue. I'm here because, well, I'm here mainly because of the water issue. Apparently, you guys are also going to be voting to raise water rates. There's been zero transparency. I had to pay $60 the other day to find out what the hell is going on with our water, because nobody here is being transparent about it. My commissioner, who's not here today, laughed about it, and it's obscene. There are people who still don't know about the toxic water we're being given. And don't sit here and tell me that the water is not toxic. When there are chemicals in the water, the water is toxic. Okay? So if you guys are actually going to increase bond fees for water today, I suggest you take a very deep look at yourselves if you want to continue being on the City Commission Board, because I'm building a slate whether I live in this city or not anymore, and you will be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments at this time? Yes, Autumn Smith?
I too am commenting about the tax fee bond schedule and the insane hike on the water rates and the readiness rate. My understanding is that rate did not even come to fruition until Perry Hart came here, and he decided that he could make this rate up. I also have heard, I don't know all the details of it, that some of the things that go on in the Water Department are being funded via that water readiness fee, including hydrant hysteria, which is a fun contest where people tear apart hydrants and build them back up just to get awards and accolades. And the word around the campfire is that the reason Battle Creek always wins every year at the state is because the other municipalities have bowed out, because they're allowed to practice on the clock and get paid to do it, while the other municipalities have to do it on their off time and on the weekends. I've also heard that you guys pay for a full trip to Disney World and all of this stuff for them to go on these water vacation type things, and we're footing the bill. And like the last lady said, we've got poisonous water and stuff like that, and we can't even get transparency from our government, and then you guys want to charge us more and up that? I mean, I remember I came here a few months ago, and we had a production, a presentation by someone, and they were talking about the cost of living and how pinched everybody is and stuff like that. And you guys continue to raise rates, continue to raise rates, continue to raise rates. And then you wonder why people can't afford to live here, or why they don't want to do business here. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? Yes. David Moore?
David Moore. Well, we put you commissioners, we vote for you commissioners by faith and strict honesty. I can't prove nothing. I don't get the information I like to get. Well, we respect honesty, and we gotta be more honest with this. Those things are not being talked about, and you think that you are just trying to stall out. We got the right to know about it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Yes, Steve?
Good evening. Steve Gutch, Washington Avenue North, Battle Creek, Michigan. Speaking of water, I see that they're replacing a lot of the inputs to people's homes, cutting the asphalt out and replacing the lead lines and all that good stuff, which is wonderful, until you hit the hole from it. I have one up the road for me that apparently was done about three weeks ago, and I went through there about a week ago, and it wasn't bad. And I say, oh, okay, it's good. It's dirt. I hit it. I now have a bent rim. Okay? I took pictures of it, which of course you guys can't see because you don't have any way to do anything here anymore. I have pictures of it. But you can go up on Washington Avenue, past the Seventh Day Adventist Church, which is on the right-hand side, and as you're going over the hill, nice cutout area, nice ditch in it there. You also see, as I like to do, you'll see a nice writing there that says bent rims, spray painted on the asphalt for you. I did that. And I also spray painted where the damage is on the asphalt. So it'd be nice if you're going to tear the roads up and create the problem that after the problem is fixed, that you re-asphalt roads so that the roads are travelable. I wouldn't even want to think about hitting on a motorcycle. So maybe somebody needs to communicate between the Water Department and the Roads Department as to, hey, guys, we're done with this. You can fill the hole back in. Apparently, it's been three weeks. So maybe somebody could do something by it. I can't talk to my work commissioner because they're not here today.
All right. Thank you very much, Steve, and I will work with Ted, and we'll find the bent rim a hole. Are there any other public comments? See none? We'll go to public hearings. Madam Clerk?
This is a public hearing to receive comment on the Brownfield Plan for the proposed Jackson Bean Management LLC redevelopment project at 99 West Michigan Avenue in Battle Creek. The project includes the rehabilitation of the existing single-story former commercial building, rehabilitation of the existing basement, and the construction of a new second and third story.
Percy Bean, please.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Percy Bean. I live at 136 Avengton Circle. I've been a lifelong resident of Battle Creek, and I'm here to support the redevelopment project at 99 West Michigan Avenue. It's been a project we've been working on for about, going on two years now. It seemed like eternity, but I'm from the profit side, and I'm used to going into a bank and getting a loan, and a building is up in 90 days. That's my prior life. But I'm just here to support the project and let you know a little bit about it. We're doing, renovating the building that's been blighted for over about a good 10, 12 years that I could reelect. And the building is to be used for residential mixed use. We're looking at putting a restaurant on the main level. The basement will have a speakeasy bar with golf simulators and pin bowling. And we're also doing, second and third floor, we're doing apartments, two bedrooms and one bedrooms. And we also will be the, I think, one of the only rooftop units in downtown Battle Creek, which will give a added attraction for our, for people coming in from out of town and our guests at the Doubletree Hotel. I just want to, I'm here before you just saying that it's an added attraction to our downtown that is greatly needed in that first section of the block coming in, coming in east, I mean, coming in west, going east in our downtown. I think that what we're doing downtown now is bringing people back residential and retail. I think that's what Battle Creek, our Battle Creek downtown is needed to thrive into the future, and I'm just here to let you know or answer any questions about the project. And it is greatly needed to Brownfield for that project. This project is not cheap, as you know. With tariffs now, the cost of construction is quite high, and I'm just here to support the project.
Percy, congratulations. We appreciate your investment and your past track record in the for-profit field. I know that your businesses were very successful, so we look forward to you and your wife making this a reality. And if there's anything we can do, please let us know. Are there any comments by the commissioner at this time? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. Thank you, Percy and Carla, for your investment in the city of Battle Creek. Could you share how many residential units you will be able to have in your?
Yeah, on the second floor, there is five units, and on the third floor, there's five units. There's two bedrooms and one bedroom units.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments at this time in the public hearing? Yes, Kathy, and then Linward Gray. Linward Gray can come first. Thank you, Lynn.
I'm also speaking to the same public hearing and the resolution that was just talked about by Percy Bean. And I just wanted to say, as a downtown neighbor, looking forward to this project, have certainly been supportive of it since I heard about it, and hope that each of the commissioners support it as well. I think the rooftop feature is going to be a major draw to our downtown and to our city. And being on the NIBC board, I know and we know that housing is very much needed. So adding additional housing to a downtown unit and space and providing that for those who need it, we just don't have enough. And so I really appreciate them making this a mixed-use space. So if you all can vote in favor of this when the resolution comes up, that is my plea. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lynn. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kathy Anteab, Park Ridge, Battle Creek. I too am in support of this development for several reasons. First, it's fabulous that we have a local person that's actually taking the initiative and moving forward with this. and moving forward with this. Thank you so much. Really appreciate the local feel for it because they kind of know what's going on. We are desperately in need of more restaurants downtown, as well as in other places around the city, so I'm a huge fan of that. The golf simulators and other activities in the basement, I think, are a really good way of keeping people downtown as part of the issue that we're having. You come down, you have dinner, what the heck are you gonna do now? So I really like that idea, and I think that we need to encourage more of that in our development stuff.
Joe?
Oops, I'm sorry. I was supposed to address you. I apologize, Mr. Mayor. And of course, I think housing, any housing that we have, especially downtown, is really excellent, is a super idea. Now these folks, well, in a few months, these folks won't have to go to parts unknown to get their fresh groceries because the grocery store is gonna be opening up on that corner, on that same corner where the development is going on. So I'm really excited about that as well, as all of us should be, and we should all try and utilize that store when we can to help keep them going until the tipping point is reached and we have enough warm bodies living downtown. So we really need that. I would like us to encourage any more activities of this nature to help keep people downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Are there any other public comments? Yes, Joe.
Joe Harris, Battle Creek. I'm not opposed to any kind of developments, but I'm a person that asks hard questions. It is my understanding, from what I've read, that there's gonna be some reimbursed costs of eligible environmental and non-environmental activities. It's my understanding, from what I've read, that those costs are about $1.1 million. What guarantees are, well, first of all, let's back up. My understanding is the cost of $1.1 million, it's gonna be reimbursed through state and tax revenue from that property, okay? Kind of clarify that. Just two hard questions. What guarantees are given to the city of Battle Creek that this property development is gonna have enough tax revenue to reimburse those costs? That's my first question. And the second question is, what kind of safeguards are gonna be put into place to protect Battle Creek taxpayers if by some catastrophic thing that the developer defaults? You know, my whole thing in asking the question is protecting the taxpayer, not against developments. I just want to make sure that all the Ts across, the Is are dotted and the like. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? Yes, John?
John Kenefick, 234 South Avenue. This is in regards to 99 West Michigan Avenue. It's great that an entrepreneur is gonna be there, but again, as was pointed out by my previous person that came up here and spoke, how much money was dumped into that place that had to do with tax dollars? And who's gonna replace those tax dollars? If he walked in here and he spent that incredible amount of money, because I passed through there many times last year and this year, seeing heavy equipment, dumpsters out there where they were filling up stuff and redoing things, it doesn't seem to me like if this is coming from some sort of capitalist person in the private sector. Something's gone here, and then everything has come to the point where things are more expensive and paid for by the tax dollars. You're gonna give me a million dollars? I could subsidize me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? Seeing none, we declare this public hearing closed. Move to our second public hearing. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This is a public hearing to receive comment on the Brownfield Plan for the Proposed Northeast Property Group LLC Redevelopment Project at 119 West Van Buren Street in downtown Battle Creek. The project will involve preparing the site for development to make way for 199 new multifamily residential units, structured parking, and 10,000 square feet of commercial space.
Declare the public hearing open. Are there any comments at this time? Yes, please.
My name is Jared Lutz. I am with Michigan Growth Advisors. We are economic development incentive consultants based out of Kalamazoo, but working on different projects throughout the state. I am here on behalf of the developer today who regrets they can't be here for some last-minute work travel. Thank you for taking the time out of our first 80-degree day to hear this project. This is an exciting project. To help orient yourself, this is on the intersection of McCamley and Van Buren, which is a city-owned surface parking lot right now. And this project will bring that site to its highest and best use by providing first-floor, ground-floor, commercial space, about 10,000 square feet, and 199 new residential units. There's also gonna be a parking deck associated with that project with about 230 new parking spaces. This represents about a $51 million investment into the city. The Battle Creek Housing Action Plan that I believe was completed last year, an interesting data point in that that I saw was only 9% of housing units in the city that are currently occupied were built after 2000. So this brings a lot of new housing into your urban core, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Gerald. Any questions, Gerald? We thank you very much and congratulate you on your investment.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments at this time? Yes, Joe.
Essentially, just the same questions as the last person, you know? It has to do with the eligible reimbursement, and this one, from what I've read, is around $14 million. And so, again, it's just crossing Ts, dotting Is. What guarantees are given to the city of Battle Creek that this property development is gonna have enough tax revenue so as to reimburse these costs? And then the other question is, what kind of safeguards are put into place to protect Battle Creek taxpayers if the developer defaults? I'm just concerned about that as a taxpayer, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments at this time? Any other public comments? Any Commission comments? We'll declare the public hearing closed. Next item on our agenda is the introduction of ordinances.
Similar to ordinances that have been adopted by other Michigan municipalities, this proposed ordinance declares that vehicles used in reckless driving or racing in the city of Battle Creek, any tools or equipment used to maintain the vehicles found at the site of reckless driving or racing, and any proceeds of reckless driving or racings constitutes a public nuisance. The proposed ordinance also authorizes the seizure of such nuisance vehicles and provides for the forfeiture of such vehicles through a nuisance abatement action in the Calhoun County Circuit Court.
Move for the approval of, rather, the introduction of Ordinance 32025.
Support.
Been moved and supported to introduce public ordinance 032025. Are there any comments from the Commission? Hearing none, would you please vote on the introduction of Ordinance 032025? The introduction of Ordinance 032025 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is 042025. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This ordinance introduction proposes amendments to Article 21 of Section 212.02 of the Battle Creek Code of Ordinances, which addresses what items may be placed on the consent agenda. Specifically, the proposed amendment will allow resolutions that either, one, lease any city property, or, two, authorize temporary use of city property to be placed on the consent agenda. The amendments clarify an ambiguity in current rules that allow for resolutions regarding leases of city property in the airport area and the outright sale of city-owned real property to be placed on the consent agenda but are silent as to resolutions regarding the lease or use of other city property. Mayor Banky requested that this ordinance amendment be placed on the agenda for introduction.
Move for the introduction of Ordinance 42025.
Support.
Been moved and supported to introduce proposed ordinance 042025. Are there any comments by the Commission? Commissioner Simmons.
So to, at least my answer for the earlier question about, does this limit Commission's ability to introduce our own resolutions? Is my understanding it would not. I can, at any point in the meeting, propose something if it gets a second that could be on the agenda. That being said, and I support the specific items that it outlines in here as being able to be added to the consent agenda because they kind of fall below that threshold, I think, of the individual action. That being said, today's consent agenda kind of took me aback. I've read all the background information on all the items, but there were a few of the items that I don't recall previously having seen on the consent agenda, like the fee bond insurance schedule. Seems like that's been on our non-consent agenda schedule before, so can you address that? Or someone address that?
Yeah, that's a good question, Commissioner. I can't say that I recall for sure if the fee bond insurance schedule has typically been on the consent agenda or the regular agenda. I suspect that, I can think of instances probably where it's maybe been on both, depending on the manager's preference for pulling it from the consent agenda and just placing it on the regular agenda as a matter of course of business. So I think it qualifies, but in the past, because it's budget-related, it may have been on the regular agenda.
Understood, then. And I've read all of that, and I don't particularly have any issue where, you know, I would like to pull it, so I'm not proposing that. Just a point of clarification on items, some of the other items that might be on there, but this particular, I support this. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commission comments? Seeing none, would you please vote on introduction of 042025? Introduction of 042025 has been approved. Next item on the agenda is Commission comment regarding meeting business.
I move for the approval of our consent agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve the consent agenda. Is there any comment that a Commission has about the consent agenda? Seeing none, would you please vote on the consent agenda? The consent agenda has been approved. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 149.
This resolution approves the 2025 millage rates and adopts the general fund and special funds budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026.
Move for the approval of Resolution 149.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve Resolution 149. Are there any comments by the Commission? I just want to thank the Commission and the city administration for their hard work with this budget. I particularly want to thank them for recognizing some of the costs that we have and some of the concerns that the Commission had, and they were able to resolve those. I'm happy with the budget. I'm happy with the millage rate. And are there any other comments at this time? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 149? Resolution 149 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 150.
Public Act 145 of 1987, which amended Public Act 345 of 1937, allows a municipality to grant the purchase of military time for retirement purposes. This resolution, if approved, provides authorization for firefighter Trevor Hagner to purchase 12 months of military time for the purpose of increasing his service credit towards retirement.
Move for the approval of Resolution 150.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve Resolution 150. Are there any comments by the Commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 150? Resolution 150 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 151.
This resolution approves a Brownfield Plan for the Proposed Jackson Bean Management LLC Redevelopment Project at 99 West Michigan Avenue, Battle Creek, Michigan, 49017 in Battle Creek.
Move for the approval of Resolution 151.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve Resolution 151. Are there any comments by the Commission? Commissioner Simmons?
So I'm wondering if for this resolution and the next, with Brownfield Plan, if the city manager can just give a quick synopsis of that mechanism that we use for these kind of developments and how those are funded, or, and if, the question was, like, if they, it doesn't come to fruition, if you wouldn't mind, please.
And a Brownfield incentive like this one is a, it's a tax incremental financing tool, and so incremental capture is used through the Brownfield to reimburse the developer. So usually when a project like this is pulled together, not only does the development entity who is working on the project do their analysis of the potential capture, but our assessing office does an analysis as well. Then usually we talk about that to try to settle on numbers that would be realistic for the project. But in this case, if the project doesn't generate the tax incremental revenue that is projected, then it's really the developer that does not get reimbursed. It's not like it's a city obligation to make that reimbursement. So, you know, hopefully the project meets the expected value over time and enough, you know, incremental revenue was generated to pay back the developer, but if that doesn't happen, then the reimbursement doesn't occur.
It's not coming out of our city's general fund, so thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Chris. Any other Commission comments? I just want to go on record and congratulate the Beans. I know of their past track record with Popeye's Chicken. I can't eat the Popeye's Chicken that I used to eat, but they took some risk several years ago when they brought that to West Michigan and owning several stores, and I just want to congratulate them, and I see nothing but the same thing happened with their development at 99. So thank you very much for, yeah. Yes, thank you. If we're prepared to vote on 151, please vote. Resolution 151 has been approved. Congratulations. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 152. Madam Clerk?
This resolution approves a Brownfield Plan for the Proposed Northeast Property Group LLC Redevelopment Project at 119 West Van Buren Street in downtown Battle Creek.
Move for the approval of Resolution 152.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve Resolution 152. Are there any comments by the Commission? Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell.
I'd like to comment on both of them that we've approved tonight or about to approve, or maybe not, but both projects, I meant. Thank you for looking at our housing situation we have in Battle Creek and getting it taken care of, trying to move forward on that. Housing is very important to myself and others. I'm currently on a board that we want to get housing development going here, and we need to get it started. And I always say, there's things that we need. We need jobs, we need housing, and we need a great place to live. And thank you for stepping forward, for filling one of those needs.
Any other comments by the Commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 152? Resolution 152 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 153. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution, if approved, authorizes the interim city manager to temporarily suspend a park rule prohibiting fishing to allow for two children's fishing activities, a pre-event on June 8th, 2025, and a fourth annual Johnny Jake Collier Teach a Kid to Fish event on August 10th, 2025, to take place at the specified Gogwak Loak Lake location.
Move for the approval of Resolution 153.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve Resolution 153. Are there any comments by the Commission?
Just one quick one. I just, like I just said earlier, making it a great place to live here, and this is one of them that we've supported for many years here in this town, and I thank all the volunteers for teaching these young children to fish. Gives them a great opportunity to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Any other comments? See none, would you please vote on resolution one fifty three? Resolution one fifty three has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution one fifty four.
This resolution, if approved, authorizes the acceptance of the proposal of best value for fee collection services at the Battle Creek Executive Airport at Kellogg Field from Vector Airport Systems LLC in the estimated three-year amount of one hundred one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Move for the approval of resolution one fifty four.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve resolution one fifty four. Are there any comments by the commission? See none, would you please vote on resolution one fifty four? Resolution one fifty four has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution one fifty five. Madam Clerk?
This resolution, if approved, accepts the proposal of best value from Asset Works, Inc., for fleet asset management software as a service in a five-year amount of two hundred ninety thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Move for the approval of resolution one fifty five.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve resolution one fifty five. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns by the commission? See none, would you please vote on resolution one fifty five? Resolution one fifty five has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution one fifty six. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution, if approved, authorizes the city manager to sign contract twenty five dash five two two nine with the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDA, for hot mix asphalt, cold milling and paving, concrete curb and gutter, sidewalk, curb ramps, and permanent pavement markings along Goodale Avenue from East Roosevelt Avenue to Limit Street and along Ridgemore Street from Limit Street to M eighty-nine Michigan Avenue, and altogether with necessary related work.
Move for the approval of resolution one fifty six.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve resolution one fifty six. Are there any comments by the commission? See none, would you please vote on resolution one fifty six? Resolution one fifty six has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution one fifty seven.
As permitted under the Michigan Open Meetings Act, a public body upon a majority vote may meet in closed session for the strategy negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement if either negotiating party requests a closed hearing and the city has requested that closed session.
Move for the approval of resolution one fifty seven.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve resolution one fifty seven. Are there any comments by the commission? See none, would you please vote on resolution one fifty seven? Resolution one fifty seven has been approved. Next item on our agenda is general public comment. If you'd like to make general public comment regarding or matters over which the city commission has control, please raise your hand and wait for us to acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You'll have three minutes to make your comment. Please state your naming address prior to beginning your comment. Or then, Autumn Smith.
Good evening, I'm Autumn Smith, Battle Creek. I'm here tonight because I believe it's time we all stop pretending everything is operating as it should in our city government. I want to bring to light a serious issue involving a violation of CGIS policy, that is the Criminal Justice Information Services. CGIS governs access and handling of sensitive law enforcement data. This isn't red tape. It's about protecting private information and upholding the integrity of our justice system. When that trust is broken, it's a threat to public safety and the rule of law. At the last commission meeting, the chief of police openly admitted to releasing CGIS protected information via the Signal app improperly. That is not just a breach of policy, that is a violation of federal security standards. The chief's admission is on record, yet nothing is being done. No discipline, no investigation, no accountability. When I became aware of this, I did what any responsible citizen should do. I reported him to the FBI. I also notified each and every one of you, the entire commission, via email, and in some cases by phone. I followed the right channels, but what I've received in return is silence. Now, I understand the commission does not directly oversee the police chief, but you do oversee the city manager, and the city manager oversees the police chief. So my question is simple. Why hasn't this commission directed the city manager to investigate Chief Bagley and the department for these serious violations? Even more troubling is the conduct of the city attorney. At the last commission meeting, this city voted via resolution one thirty-two to reverse my FOIA denial. That is a clear directive from this body, yet since then, the city attorney has refused to comply with your order and release the document. Let me repeat that. Your own attorney is defying you and defying state transparency laws. So what do we have here? A police chief releasing protected information, a city attorney refusing to follow both law and your orders, and a commission that is sitting idle while the people you oversee act with impunity. You were elected to serve the public and hold the city leadership accountable. Right now, you're failing to do that. You may not control the actions of others, but you do control whether or not you act. I urge you, direct the city manager to open an investigation, hold the city attorney accountable, and show the citizens of Battle Creek that you are willing to do the job we elected you to do. I also would like to add, one of the commissioners, I believe it was Commissioner Smith, at the last meeting, asked if we had policy regarding social regarding the use of social media and communication devices. I'd like to direct you to the documents that I've handed each and every one of you. Battle Creek Police Department Policy seven point seven oh one point five and seven point one seven oh one point seven directly explains everything that Chief Bagley said. He said he didn't have a policy. We have a chief that doesn't even know his own policies, and it's right here, right here, and he's violating them. What are you guys going to do about it? You guys were elected to do something about it, and you've done nothing.
You're done. Any other public comment? Yes, John.
John Kinefik, two thirty-four South Avenue. Sometimes things fall my way that kind of I find very interesting, since I'm going to execute that because I'm a process server.
All right, stop, stop right. Yes, David.
I apologize for not knowing too much about these issues tonight. I do wish them the best of luck. I like to see a good business come to Battle Creek. Also, we got to watch our budget, too. So I can't give a ten, all right or wrong, but I wish truth comes out and I wish it the best. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other public comment tonight? Yes.
Good evening, Reese Edkins, eighty-four South Twenty-third Street. I want to say thank you to whoever did it. Two weeks ago, I came up to you concerning a problem on Columbia Avenue where the bridge, where they are doing construction, and requested that it be posted as no left turns. On Friday, we came by there because I travel that all the time, taking the wife to work. She goes to Marshall, so I travel that quite often. There are multiple signs up there now, the whole area, that say no left-hand turns, and I want to report that the traffic is flowing a whole lot faster now that they've taken away the left-hand turns from that area. So I do want to say thank you for whoever did it and whoever put it into the hands of who needed to do it because the traffic is flowing a whole lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Reese. Any other public comment at this time? Yes, Michelle?
Michelle Gregory, two oh two South Avenue. Kind of already vented my frustration earlier. Luckily, I wanted to say that to start off, I'm moving, and I signed my papers to a house on Monday, and I will leave this city and this county, thank God. So back in February of this year, you guys sent a notice out to residents. Not everybody got that notice. I remember speaking to Mr. Banky on the phone about it. I was pretty pressed, still am, especially because since February, there have been zero, zero updates about our water. As the chemical smell comes from my sink and my faucets and gets worse as the day goes by or as the weeks go by, where is the city? Hey, look, they tell me to check social media. There's been no posts. They tell me to check online. There ain't nothing posted there either. You say, watch the news. Well, first of all, there are many people in this city who don't watch Channel Three or any other news outlet. So just so you're aware, a lot of people don't watch the news, a lot of people aren't on Facebook, and a lot of people, believe it or not, aren't on Twitter either. So there's plenty of people, if I knocked my doors down the street, they didn't know about their water until I told them. So you could tell Commissioner Morris that I did go knock some doors in my neighborhood and let some people know, because she said she wouldn't do it and that it wasn't her job to let the people know that, you know, the water is toxic. So I guess I spoke with Mr. Perry on the phone down at Department of Public Works, and I have it recorded where he said, we don't have to release that information. Excuse me? That's a Flint excuse. That's a Benton Harbor excuse. And both of those cities, when they tried to do this crap, didn't go so well for them, just so you're aware. So maybe you guys should be a little bit more transparent. I know transparency is very hard for this city, but in regards to people's water, when people are bathing, their children, pregnant women are taking showers in this, all sorts of stuff, kids are drinking in it, bathing in it, playing in it, all these chemicals in the water, and you people still, still, months later, have not given any updates. And then I have to pay almost sixty dollars, and I just got back from burying my uncle in Illinois, and now I got to come back and look at all the stuff I FOIA'd to make sure I even got the right information after paying almost sixty dollars for it. It's absolutely absurd that I pay property taxes and city taxes from my paycheck, and I can't even be told what the fuck is in my water.
All right, stop right there. You're out of order. Are there any other public comments at this time? Are there any commission comments? See none, we're going to take a recess, and we'll be back after our closed session.